Everyone. Okay, for those of you who have had a chance to look at the agenda, are there any? Well, first I'll just tell you the agenda. So call to order check, agenda review in process. Next is public comment, then we're going to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Then our open discussion period with specific topics. Six, review the housing resolution draft. Seven, take public comment related to items five and six. Eight, the planner's report. Nine, a report on events, including liaison updates and recent and upcoming events. Ten, other business. Eleven, wrap up and planning for our next meetings. Twelve, possible adj- executive session. And thirteen, adjourn. Are there any adjustments to the agenda requested?
We are ambitious.
That's a normal agenda.
I know, I know.
I think we can do, I'm optimistic.
Okay, I'm going.
We have a good track record.
You do have a very good track.
I think I get the, what do they call them, softballs, I get the slow pitches. Um, so hearing no requests to adjust the agenda, we will close out topic two and move to topic three, which is public comment. Do we have any public who wish to comment at this time?
We don't have anyone in the room here, so if you're on the Zoom and you want to make a comment, use the raise hand feature.
Okay, I don't see anyone. And that's okay. If you have specific comments related to topics five and six, then we have another section for you later, so that is okay. All right, no requests, so we will move on to the minutes from May 2nd. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? I read them yesterday. Okay, does anyone, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Eric, motion to approve. Does anyone want to make any edits or edits, or have they done any errors?
I believe that's the one where my name is still wrong.
Again, that happened to you a lot?
But this is my last name. Usually it's the first thing that gets stolen, but this is the last one, so yeah. Just needs to be corrected.
Okay. I will review.
One of the two minutes had it stolen.
Okay.
It's not super important, but you know, we haven't go to court, we want to make sure that it's not the wrong guy or he's called in for it.
I think it's important to have it.
Well, even as it is then.
Okay, uh, any other requests or edits?
Recording in progress.
Oh, okay, well, there we go.
Okay.
Thank you, Sabina.
Sorry, my bad. That's okay.
Mine too.
There was, uh, nothing actually happened previous to this. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the, and Susan?
Aye.
And Sabina?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Wait, you got Wendy as well?
Oh, Wendy, I'm sorry, Wendy.
That's okay, I'm gonna abstain since I was not there.
And that's what I was just, inside my brain, I already was like, well, Wendy can't vote, but I still need to give her the chance to say she thinks.
Yeah.
Sorry, Wendy.
No, no worries.
Okay, so that closes item four, we will move on to item five. So the first topic for discussion is the town plan community forum debrief. Who would like to speak first? Don't all jump at once.
I'm so curious, help me, paint a picture for me.
Um, how many people did they say came? Sixty?
We had close to eighty, I think I counted eighty-one names on the sign-in sheet.
So yeah, I would say well attended.
Mm-hmm.
Um, really collegial environment, lots of great community conversations. I think there was some hesitation because I've never been to a, a forum that was run with that format before. So I was definitely a little at loose end, like how is this gonna work? And I thought it worked great.
Yeah.
I think the proof is in the pudding, so I'm really curious to know how much actual material feedback you got. I did see a lot of people just chatting and maybe not filling out forms.
Mm-hmm, I haven't gotten any yet.
So they collect, the consultants collected it also, we didn't know what the...
Yes, and they said they were going to transcribe everything, so that's probably a big job.
That is a big job.
Yeah.
I would say a lot, I had a lot of members of the public say thank you and how much they enjoyed the format. Unsolicited. Cause I had my little tag that made it clear that I was part of the planning commission.
I was impressed by how many people seemed to be writing a lot and thinking a lot about what they were writing. So I look forward to seeing those comments.
I heard a lot of comments of essentially, I didn't know that, about lots of parts of our town.
Oh, interesting.
And a lot of, where does this X fit in? I had to refer back to the zoning map multiple times, so go over here and see what that zone says, so you can see where you are in it.
Yep.
At present. And I think there were some, there were two questions, or three questions where people didn't really know what to say. Um, and where, those were the open-ended questions, I think might have been, what do you think of either the economy, or it was housing stock or something like that, where it was just a comment of what you think you want to see here. I felt that needed a little bit more direction. Because when people asked me, what am I supposed to put in there, I was like, well, what do you think about housing here? What's it mean to you? Where do you want it to go? Uh, and that lack of direction may show up in their analysis of it. I did hear also a number of people make direct comments of, I don't want this here. Here being near where they live. People up on Silly Hill saying, I don't want more houses here. People in other parts of the town saying, I don't want more of that here. So we, we did get, I heard anyway, a number of yes here, no there around things.
So you did hear some yes here, not just, I don't want this, you did hear some I do want as well?
Well, NIMBY, not where I am, but over there is okay.
Okay.
And I don't believe we had enough representation from the corners, from the flats, and from the, from, um, the center.
From the villages.
Where they get their feeling for what was going, most of the people seem to have come more from within what we call the triangle, or on the other side of it, off a raceway and places like that.
Did we ask on the signup sheet, um, where folks were coming, where they lived?
No. Hmm. Yeah, cause we could have asked, like, some of the surveys, which zone or even, they don't say, like, what, what road do you live on, but like, what? What section of town do you live in?
So on the signup sheet, was it just names, or is there any contact information? There wasn't address? Cause the sign-in sheet in the room, when people come to the PC meeting, that has something on it, right? Address?
I think it just had email and phone, cause perhaps, I don't remember having address.
I wonder, we probably could figure out eighty percent of the people?
I was gonna say, so I know some of my neighbors who live here in the corners, or I know we had some people from the corners. Fields Lane. Good Simons Road. Yeah, I mean, I, I...
We had people from, from, um, Barbara, from, um, sorry. Skunk Hollow on there, we had some people from the Barbara Farm area, a couple of people, we had a fair number from Silly Hill, and I believe we had a couple from the foothills. It sounded that they were in that place. Uh, we did have, I think there was one, there were two or three people from flats.
Yeah.
Uh, they had some comments about sidewalks on the side, and why were they here and not there? Are we gonna make this intersection work and things of that nature?
Yeah, and I did find it interesting by, um, by sort of demographic divide, there were people who have younger kids who were saying, how do we get more paths and connectivity and stuff like that?
Comment my wife made was that there were probably three couples that were under the age of forty.
Right.
And it just felt, from her observation, they were like, people were like, come around, like, there was the honey pot and all the bees were going after him, because everybody only wants to hear you to talk to.
Yeah.
And I kind of felt sorry for them because they may have wanted to not have those conversations, but...
Hey, Sarah?
Unusual substance.
Yes, Sabina?
Yeah, we have a request that you pull the mic closer to you.
Sure, yes.
A mic? Thank you.
You can have your own in then.
Oh, we can each have our own.
We each have our own microphone today.
Wow, I feel powerful.
Sure. So it may not be possible to, because we don't have hard data, to say who was representative, who wasn't. And so that's just a good knowing for us as we look at whatever data comes in, and it's a good knowing for us in terms of as we move forward, being more intentional. If we do want to have that data to make sure our sign-in sheets have it. So lessons learned.
Mm-hmm.
But I think it, it does give us, I mean, certainly visually, we can see that it was an older demographic primarily. And so I think that helps inform us as we think about our outreach for the next events, that we are a bit more intentional and recognizing, um, spring is a very, very busy time for people with young children and anyone in the schools. So I think we missed that grouping. And so if there's a way of tying what we do in outreach to school-based events, or, or people's schedules who fit that demographic, that will be important.
Well, and I think Linda tried to cover that in putting the, um, you know, the, sort of the call to action, fill out the survey, find more information on that in the school newsletters.
Oh, wonder.
So...
Yeah, I was gonna save that for the planner's report, but I can, I can spoil it now.
Spoil it, spoil it.
Well, wait, before you go to that, also, you know, we, we had briefly chatted about trying to get childcare, which I heard from at least one person who would have really been appreciative of that. So I think the, the spring break immediate, the week immediately before our thing sort of squashed our, our attempts. But I think knowing that, um, knowing how important it might be for some people to have childcare provided, I think we should have a better plan going forward.
Agreed.
Perhaps also, uh, any of the planning commission members who have neighbors with kids, school-aged kids, perhaps we should be encouraging those neighbors to at least send one representative from their house over. And make it, make it as, as you say, an intentional conscious act.
Right.
I know I've got seven neighbors with kids in school, invite each one of them.
I think that we all did a good attempt too, to have the virtual online version, to be there for those types of people too. I'm not saying it's a total replacement for being at the in-person event, but just having the ability to access the materials online is, is a better, is better than it would have been like ten years ago, where you would have just had a meeting in person, and if you didn't show up, then you're out of luck.
Can we track visitors after that, to the website and to that information? Is there a way to?
Yeah, because the people who are doing it online now, so if you guys all look around the room, you see, is the forum basically set up there? So somebody can walk into town hall and experience the forum with not all the posters, but most of the posters. So Wendy, that would be a way that you might, if you had time to go in and look at town hall, because all the, most of the materials are there. And so somebody can sort of saunter around the room, and the questionnaires are there. Um, so those are separate, because they're, they would be returned to the ballot box. And then anybody who does it online is going to be returning their results to the, to the link on the website, which is coming in through Survey Monkey, which we've never used before. So I think we can ask Steve Whitman, who is responsible to compile all the results and the data, to, um, to track the source. What forms were collected at the forum, what forms is Linda gonna give to him at the end of May, and what forms are coming in online? Um, he did shoot an email to us that, as of a couple of days ago, there were about thirty responses already filled in online that came in after the forum, I think, since there were, Sabina advertised that you could do it online. And all the same posters are linked online.
Hmm.
So we, you know, we could potentially, you know, double or triple the number of people who are providing the input. And other than the fun and the snacks and the fun lottery, the actual online material and the online questions are exactly the same. So there's not really, other than being able to talk about it with people right in the room, there's not really a difference in the setting of that would constrain the responses and the surveys very differently. Whether or not you attended the forum on that day, or whether you did it online. So that's kind of a good segue to the item here, which was, okay, eighty people were there, we, they were mostly older. How do we increase in the immediate future the awareness that the forum is still available, and then what do we do going forward in the summer?
Okay, so if that's the next topic, Sabrina, do you have any feedback about the forum before we talk about what Susan just said? Increasing awareness? Yeah, I think you're muted, Sabina.
I am. Um, I don't have any additional comments. Mine mirror what everyone else experienced, other than what I said about the childcare, so that's it.
Okay. Okay, so how do we increase our summer outreach? Well, we're not really in summer yet, but...
I have a document here to share that I...
Can I just, before we go off completely on the additional questions, can, in the town, or someone who works for the town who's in this building, perhaps reach out to all of the other town commissions and committees and request that their members go onto the site and fill in the form?
That's a good idea.
Think of someone in this room who has access to all of those, it's not me.
Mm-hmm. Well, or as liaisons, we can all ask.
Yeah, that was actually a recommendation that, um, Steve gave to Susan and I, just when he gave us the feedback that there had been a few online surveys that came in, and Susan asked, is there any other, do you have any other ideas for how we can try to get more people, other than the usual, we do just like putting it on front porch forum over and over again? And he actually did recommend direct outreach, uh, like one-on-one, um, from planning commission members, staff, to individuals and inviting them, you know, in like, in a direct email to participate in the online forum. So if there are people that you can think of that you know didn't attend, or that you just think would have valuable input, could reach out to them, send an email or phone call or whatever, and I can send it to neighboring communities as well.
I'm thinking like, we have a conservation committee, we have a trails committee, we have all of these others. And I, I know that there were one or two people from trails committee there, I think, but
Yep.
Not all of them, and...
So the question is?
Yeah, I said, I sent an email to all the people on the trails committee. And, um, I think the key is to make sure that you include a link to the, to the exact site on the website. So I'm happy to send everybody the email that I sent, and if you just want to copy and paste it, and send it to people that you know, or committees that, and, um, I mean, the other, I did send an email to about eighty people in advance of the forum that came from us a couple of months ago, where we were brainstorming all the contacts, and people were feeding in email addresses. And I did use that, I could send an email to all those same people and say, if you came, great, if you couldn't come, here's two more options, you can come to town hall, or you can go online. And I would, and, and I would say any friends, any neighbors, anybody, the more personal it is from somebody that they know, the better.
I agree.
And before we jump into the summer outreach plan, I'll just go back to my spoiler about the school newsletter. Um, so last week I was able to get, uh, I created a little one-page flyer with the QR code and a link to the town plan website in the, it went out into the Jericho Elementary School newsletter that goes home to all the families every week. And I was able to get it in the Browns River Middle School newsletter that goes home to all of those families. And I printed up a, a poster, um, with the QR code and had it hung, I dropped them off at, or John's wife brought them to MMU, and they agreed to hang them in the hallways with the QR code for students and staff to hopefully engage with. Um, and both, at both the middle school and the elementary school, I also, um, suggested that folks could share it with the students, I mean, the staff members, because we would want feedback from not just the families of the students, but also the staff members. So we'll see if we get any results from that.
And then, did Lindsay Wilcox also say she was gonna bring some fourth graders down here?
She did, but they haven't come yet, so that was another connection. Uh, she actually said, um, third and fourth grade might be coming to visit town hall to view the posters. Um, and in anticipation of that, I thought they were gonna come last Friday, I created a little survey and activity that I have on the table over there. But then they didn't come, so, I don't know, they, I guess they still could come this week or next week. I'll reach out to her again and just touch base to see, um, if they're, if she has any updates on, if any of the classes are gonna take advantage of it, because that could be a really fun and interesting way to engage. Yeah, and then, you know, they'll go home and tell their parents about it, which I was hoping would, you know, get more interest in the survey, so.
Those former weeks of school.
Is that it?
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I think you're right.
Um, so I also took your poster and I put it up on Facebook on the Jericho Residence page, and there's two comments. One says, Jericho is a country town, keep it that way, I was born here, grew up here, and still live here with my family, I don't want a city. And then another one says, yeah, we need a bar, a pizza place that delivers, a Chinese restaurant, and a steakhouse all over at the old lumberyard.
Wow.
So, over in Riverside. And I also posted it on the, um, caregivers of Jericho and Underhill, but I think it got removed, because they didn't consider that a relevant post, so that's a bar.
A bar, a pizza place, a steakhouse all over there.
Hmm, yeah. Yep.
So the forum can only be up, at least in town hall, until May 31st? And I think Linda and I thought that that was, it was good to have a deadline, even for the online survey, because they do need to compile the data. And we need to, David needs time to digest the data and incorporate it into the draft. So anything on the forum is between now and May 31st. And we'll continue to do some front porch forums a couple of, over the next week and a half. And then the list that Linda's showing now is June forward, so June forward is no longer the forum. June forward is now turning our attention to like other basic topics or venues.
Move this, can I move this thing? Anyone know?
Your screen sharing.
Yeah, I can see it, looks great.
I know, but on our screen here in the room, we have stuff blocking it.
Um, yes, you just had it.
Oh, okay, you can move that.
Yep.
All right, can I just move?
Yep, or you can press the smallest.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay.
And then move it.
All right, all right.
Zonymize.
But now we can't see anybody.
That's okay, temporary.
Susan, do you want to talk through this, or do you want me to?
Uh, you can, that would be great, thanks.
All right, so, um, this is just, uh, my brainstorm with input from Susan on, uh, things we could do over the summer. Um, I think all of you are aware that we do have a table available at the farmer's market to all of the different town committees, and the planning commission is signed up to be at the table on June 8th and August 15th. So for the June 8th table, we thought that would be a good opportunity to try to get some community feedback on the list of values that David, uh, had in the town plan outline, to get confirmation that people, um, are on board with those, and, or if there are other values that aren't there, that maybe should be there. That could be maybe an easy way for, to have an interactive activity, where you don't necessarily have to like engage in conversation with people. Um, and we also thought it would be a good way to just, you know, kind of keep the awareness of the town plan update out there in the public. And didn't have any other thoughts on June yet, so, um, if anyone has ideas.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So the town, the, the values that you're referring to, is he revising them after the conversation from the meeting last, um, from the last meeting?
Yes, he, after that meeting, Linda and I met with him, and we asked him to read our minutes, and also told him that the planning commission had, um, different opinions about what those values were and how they should be framed. So he followed up an email and sent a much larger list of values. Um, that included some of the things Wendy that you had commented. And so instead of, you know, five that he was proposing, it's like twenty or something. So Linda thought maybe we could have those on a poster, and people could use stickers to identify ones that they felt were important, and I think we probably need a definition, like, what does it mean to have a value? How does a value get incorporated? You know, what does the community do with a value? Like, why does it matter? I don't know exactly how to frame that. Um, but I'm, I can share the email, or Linda, I think he sent it to you too, we could share that email to you. Um, and we would, we'll have another meeting before that farmer's market. So yes, it's a, it's a bigger list.
Thanks for that update.
Okay.
Um, SJ has her hand up, I think for a while now.
Oh, sorry, we don't have our thing.
It's okay, I, I put it up and then I put it down, uh, because I was gonna wait till public comment, but while you're on this calendar, um, are, are the two working sessions still happening in June, um, local economy and infrastructure?
Yes, June 6th and June 20th.
If our, one of the pieces that we know we're missing, or that we didn't catch as well as we might, um, live and in person, in addition to the farmer's market, is there anything that is school-based, school-related, happening on the school grounds that would make sense for us to try and catch before school's out of session? I say that remembering that when my kids were small, that would have been insanity, but I'm just, I'm just mentioning it, right? Cause I should remember, like, from after April vacation to the end of the school year, it's just, it's crazy town.
Prom for those kids who don't wanna go?
Right, so I'm just wondering, just, I just wanna, you know, it is, is there something there, or is it like signup day at Jericho Rec Camp, like when the rec camp starts? Or something where there are...
That's...
I would not recommend that.
Okay, okay.
It's been a while, but I'm pretty sure that...
Yeah, that's also insanity.
At those, at those times, it's relative.
Well, and also, yes, it's insanity, and you're also thinking like, and after I get through this melee, I have to try to get to work on time.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good thought, though, Heidi.
I'm just trying to think, like, where, where, like, where are people that we could go to, and we're not asking them to add something additional to their schedule? That, that was really my...
I'll go back to my statement, instead of just seniors only, we might get them for prom night, when they're, after their kids.
What about some of the events that happened at Deborah Rossin Library? Um, I know, like, maybe just having a presence or a poster, or some, I, I don't know what kind of presence we have at the library. I haven't, this, this does not speak well of me, but I have not been at the library for a while.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Fair enough, we could probably get our copies of posters put out there for people to comment on.
Yeah, I could drop off a poster that has the QR code, like the one, I could just modify the one that is at the high school.
Yeah.
Um, put that up there.
At the library, I put it in the center as well.
Mm-hmm. Right, I think that might be a way, at least we can get, at least we can get some information in front of young families, because a lot of young families use both those places. They have programming for young families.
Yep. Love your thinking, and libraries want to position themselves as a community resource. Love your thinking, and libraries want to position themselves as a community resource.
All right, good brainstorms. I'm gonna keep talking through this summer timeframe, and feel free to just chime in if you have any other ideas.
Really, because you said farmer's markets before were June 8th and August 15th, but it's actually June 8th and August 31st.
Yep.
Because I will be here the 31st, I will not be here this.
Sorry if I said the wrong day.
I just wanna make sure I have it in my calendar.
What about the concert, are there gonna be any more concerts at Mill River?
Yes. I'm sure there will be the regular five concerts.
That would be nice.
So we could set up a table of someone sitting there as people walk in.
Dave says. Sorry.
Probably can't, because I probably will have All-Star baseballs those days.
Dave Ganzer suggested Harvest Market, which is in September. I don't know if the, that might be after the final draft, but I can talk to Livy Strong about the concert series in the park and just confirm with her that it's happening and find out how we can incorporate our message into that event.
What, what, I mean, you have to think about, are we taught, are we telling, like, we have a message to tell, or are we soliciting, like, we're trying to figure out, we wanna hear input in some sort of format?
Good question.
A little of both, isn't it? We're trying to tell them what's, what's going on, increase awareness of it, and at the same time, offer the opportunity to give us feedback based upon the question sets that we have and the feedback loops or vehicles that we're using. If they don't know about them, they can't give us feedback, so we have to give the education first.
Right, which leads me back to one of these next couple items on the outreach plan. So in July, on July 18th at our planning commission meeting, we will have a draft from David that we'll be able to discuss as an agenda item. And shortly after that, Susan and I thought we could have sort of a question of the month type of format, where we tried to solicit specific feedback on priorities in the town plan.
So we're just having one meeting in July?
We.
The 4th is a Tuesday.
So the 4th is a Tuesday, so that I think could be something we could talk about, whether we wanna try to schedule.
Are, are we gonna see the draft before that meeting?
Yes, because we're supposed to get it on Friday, so that I can send it out to you with the agenda that I usually get out on Fridays. So that would give you the weekend.
We'd have just the weekend, because we have a Friday, the 17th. No, the 15th.
Yeah.
16th. Any chance we can get it sooner than?
I would love to say yes, but I, that would be a David question, and I can ask him.
He's already hedged a little bit on his dates, and so I, when we met, I was really clear with him, because if you, like, Lynda's been looking at all of the regulatory requirements that the plan adoption needs to go through in the fall, that we really don't have time for him to miss his, his date. He has to deliver it to us really by the 13th, that Friday before, if not sooner. I mean, originally, he was going to deliver a draft in June, but our work sessions and the forum all got delayed by like three to five weeks, depending. So that's, but we're backing up really from September, and the main goal of this list is to say at some point, we, we kind of want to narrow the focus in a way to feedback on the draft. We're sort of past the point of generalized, like, what do you think, and what do you like, and what do you, how do you feel? And more to the point, so that's why Lynda and I were wondering if from July through August, our activities could be more targeted. They might be online, they might be at a concert, it doesn't matter where they are, what format they take, we don't really know. But by then, we're probably gonna have really specific questions, like 80% of the draft looks good, we think that everybody would buy into it, it's supported by all the feedback we've heard so far, but there's these gnarly issues that we just feel like we could use more direction on. I guess that's what I'm hoping, and that we would focus some of the July, August activities on kind of nailing down maybe some of those outstanding controversies. So that the draft could be updated between July and August, and basically prepared and ready for a hearing in September. So between now and June is really like, talk to as many people, get as much feedback to David, it doesn't have to wait for a meeting. You, we can email him, we can talk to people and shoot as much, he's in total vacuum mode right now, taking all the input he can have. And then, then it'll be a matter of editing, honing, liking and not liking what he's done.
Susan, what percent of the town plan will be brand spanking new text versus reconfiguration of existing text? Is this a complete review, or is it an update?
I think what David's doing right now is all, if you look at all those posters around the room, and they say, here's housing, here's transportation, I think the material in the work session presentations and the material on the posters are pretty similar, or they're extensions of each other. And I think he's drafting as he's going. Basically, I think those posters and those presentations are like high-level summaries of what the text is gonna be. So I, I think if we're all paying attention and digesting and giving feedback along the way, his drafting is really just taking that material and assembling it into more of a narrative form. But it's not gonna be, you know, dramatically different. We did, we did, we were quite clear with him, though, that from our last meeting, that the planning commission really feels like the plan needs to be not poetry and just organized around like our big hitter topics, housing, natural resources, connectivity, infrastructure. I think that was what we talked about at our last meeting. I'm missing one, there's one more in there. So I think that, I think volume two, all of the data and extra stuff will probably be a lot of what's in the current plan, but updated. And a lot of it will be removed. I don't think there'll be like so much new that's not new data. I think what's new, what'll be new are, so what, what are we gonna do now? Like, what really are we gonna try to accomplish as a community over the next three to eight years? And I think that's sort of like where the rubber meets the road.
There, there's something that makes me a little uneasy about the amount of time between, like, now and July 5th or 13th, whatever that Friday is, just because, you know, you sink a lot of time into developing a first draft. And if it comes back and we have, if we're maybe want a lot of substantial changes, really, how realistic is that? With the, between then, that July 18th date, and then, you know, that September 5th. I don't know, it just feels like is there another step that maybe it's a detailed outline, you know, something that becomes before the draft to make sure that he's in the direction that we're hoping that he's taking?
Exactly, which is why I asked him for that outline, which we went over at our last meeting, and most of us really didn't like that much. And, or we, I shouldn't say that, most of us felt like it was missing the mark of what we had in mind. And we gave him that direct feedback. I didn't, I didn't mince words around about it. And I think the interim steps, really, in his mind, are these work sessions where each one of them has had, you know, decent public participation and questions and feedback from the planning commission. He's also gonna get input directly from the Affordable Housing Committee. Any committee is welcome to give him direct feedback of what their, what their priorities are. I think the, when we have the work sessions around infrastructure and the local economy, that will all, so those are also interim steps for him to be getting direction and feedback. How much he's listening, I can't really, you know, I can't say. You're right, we won't really know until we see the draft.
I, I would think it would be appropriate for us to ask for a revised version of that outline soon, because that's the high-order priorities of the plan. And if we don't like the higher, high-order priorities, then we're not gonna like anything after it. So I would think it would be reasonable for us to ask for a revision of that outline, just to make sure that he's going in the same direction we want him to.
I completely agree with you on that, Chris.
We can do that. He's away and not available until the end of May. And then he'll be with us at our next two meetings on June 6th and June 20th. So potentially, it would be reasonable by June 6th, and if not then by June 20th, for him to submit an updated outline. Because you, if he's gonna draft by July 13th, he's gotta have it figured out by then.
Yeah, and maybe, as you said, Susan, maybe having you and/or Lynda forward to the full planning commission, the revised themes, because it does sound like he heard some of it, but the rest of the commission doesn't know that he heard that, and that will at least be a placeholder until we get more information.
Yeah, his, his revised list of values, it was that, he has values and themes, and we, we explained to him that that didn't, wasn't necessarily like explicit enough. But the values list that he sent is, is a much bigger list that he wants help or direction from in terms of narrowing it down. So I will work with Lynda on communicating back to David, and I think we're questioning the next day about on the 6th, and if he, if not the 6th, on the 20th, or before, you know, an email.
Since we're talking about it, do, do, I'm sorry, you might have said it and I missed it, the deadlock, and we think that Steve is gonna give us the feedback from the forum?
Well, since the forum in the town hall there online is open until, until May 31st.
Right, so it will be after.
It'll be after that. My understanding, though, is that they're doing it as they go, so I think we should also request that we have that feedback by June 6th, that meeting on June 6th.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed. Okay, question of the month is still, I think, open on that first.
Right, so last time we met, we worked on a question of the month, but then once Lynda and I were at the forum, and we saw that they were basically all those questions, we were like, well, we can't hit people up with question of the month while the forum is going on. So we made an executive decision, which I hope people support, to say, we're not gonna also publish a question of the month this month, because instead, we'd rather publish invitations to answer all the questions that they developed. However, we thought it would make sense to revive question of the month once the forum is closed and the draft is produced. But not really knowing what the draft looks like, it's hard to know what, how we would use question of the month, but we thought we wouldn't use it until July. So does anybody object?
Yeah. We didn't want to pepper people with like, there's this other survey we want you to do, and then this other survey we want you to do. We felt like it was better to focus all the energy towards the the community forum survey, which will have those infrastructure and local economy questions, even though we didn't get to wordsmith them.
By the end of the month, this month, so at least it's with the month of June without anything in it. Do we wanna stop communicating with the community for the month of June? I, I personally say we should continue to come up with something for June. The, the May question of the month is fill out these surveys, let's come up with something, even if it's just, what's your favorite ice cream? Just at least talk to the community and say, we're here.
But I think that the, we could do a question of the month in June about the community values.
Agreed.
It could be as simple as the list and say, rank them.
Yeah, or pick your top five, rank your top five, and leave us.
Or an open, which one, what do you value most? What do you think are the community values? But I, that, I, I'm, I'm.
And then we could also, that's the same timeframe with the farmer's market.
So it'd be, yeah, I love it.
Yeah, we could do that.
Genius.
Yep.
Keep the conversation going.
We can sleep for the rest of the meeting.
Back to Susan.
Okay. And we will also have the June 6th and June 20th work sessions with David. I didn't include them on here, because this was really more intended to be like new, new outreach, rather than, that's like already on the on the docket for outreach, so I apologize that I didn't just pop it in here, so we'd know that. That, that is also gonna be happening. Okay, that sounds good. Susan, did you have something?
No. Okay, all right, then let's close out that discussion topic. And I think we're ready to move on to the housing resolution draft from the Affordable Housing Committee.
My, I can share this, the slide deck here, is someone prepared to talk through it? SJ and or Susan?
I am, Susan.
Okay. Hang on a second. Okay, are you seeing that?
Yes.
All right, let me see that in presentation mode.
Wait for it.
How do I get rid of this? Can I make this disappear?
Yes, yes, you go to the three dots on the bottom there, next to the camera.
What are you trying to get disappear?
Oh, it's not on our screen, it's only on this screen.
It's only on your screen, we can't see that.
I think it's on the share screen, though.
Go.
Yeah, it is on the share screen.
On that one, you should set, you should hide presenter view.
Got it. There we go. Oh, wait, now our screen's blank.
Just wait, wait. It gets confused, it always needs a minute. Don't panic.
You are right.
Okay, we're good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, some of this will look familiar. It's a, it's a subset of what we went over the last time in early April, is when SJ and I talked about the housing resolution, but I think not all the planning commission members were at that meeting, and everybody's here tonight, which is great. So the just to say, it's listed on the agenda that it's the housing resolution draft from the housing committee, and I just wanna clarify that it was really a a housing resolution that the, a subset of the planning commission worked on, and we asked the Affordable Housing Committee to do a piece of it. And the piece of it that they provided to us was around the numbers and the targets and the housing type and the definition. So it's very much a joint effort. It's not like we're receiving something that they prepared. Like, I've scrutinized every word of this thing, Lynda's gone over it, Chitney County Regional Planning Commission's gone over it, so it's really like a joint effort. Okay, so just to remind everybody, why are we doing this? What's the resolution? Having a discussion about the draft, and then what are the next steps? Next slide. I need like a little belting. So remember, we talked that a resolution is not an ordinance. A resolution is to, is really about sentiment and intention. And basically, I like to think of it as setting a framework. So it's sort of a soft sell. You're kind of like warming up the ground for the future garden. So it's sort of a soft sell. You're kind of like warming up the ground for the future garden. It's not the garden, it's warming up the ground for the garden. Okay, so in our case, in this case, the housing resolution is mostly around clarifying our goals. We could be less impatient, and we could just do all this work inside the town plan. And we would wait until December of 2023, and have probably the same basic intentions incorporated into the town plan. But we don't see a need to wait. That's something we need to talk about. But so that resolution, energy built around developing this resolution last fall, when the town plan was really further into the distance, like, why wait? Let's do a standalone action and keep the momentum going with the select board. So the goal is for the select board to adopt this resolution, and we are preparing the draft of the resolution for their review. And they can decide they don't want to do it, they can decide to change it, they could say, thank you very much. So part of our goal here is to develop something that we think they would in fact adopt. Otherwise, it's a little bit of a not the best use of our resources. Okay, so that's what, why we're doing this. We talked about the structure. It basically is two parts. The first part sets the context, and the second part says what you think or what you want to do. It doesn't actually force you to do anything, and you don't really want to back them into a corner exactly, that says, you must do this and you must do that. That's not the goal of the resolution. So we talked a lot about accountability last time. The goal is really to get everybody on the same page, looking at the same future. I think I might have joked with S J that it's like, and, or David, because we've been talking about Jericho's journey forward, that this is like a waypoint in the GPS system. And this is one of the first waypoints to set, but it's not the destination itself. It's getting us on the way to being there. So the whereas, the CPRCC helped us a lot with that, the whereas are the facts of the situation. What's the housing situation in Vermont? What's the housing situation in Jericho? What's the recent legislation around that? What are other programs around that? How do we compare to our neighbors? Those, what all those whereas statements say. And then, therefore, what do we think we should do? We think we should set goals around increasing the overall supply of housing in Jericho, and we think we should set some specific goals that some of that supply is specifically intended for missing middle income families and lower income families. And here are some basic principles, again, a framework, about how we intend to get there. Later on, when we are really in the weeds on the town plan, I expect us to be able to be a lot more specific and refer back to this resolution. And I think a lot of the more specifics, we will want to incorporate it into the town plan. It'd be an easier conversation if this resolution is already adopted. So it's a sequencing. So then, the resolution, the content of it is to basically say, we would like Jericho to increase the rate of construction over the next four years. And those rates and those housing types were, did a deep dive from the Affordable Housing Committee, because they developed the expertise. They determined what they thought was reasonable. That was an increase over the past several years, rates of growth, but not so big of an increase that it would be like ridiculous, like it's never gonna happen. So that's what the resolution says. So that's the framework. I think that's it. So this you all saw before, and this is in the text, so I wasn't really gonna go through this, but just, you know, the high level, that growth is stagnant, there's a campaign to build 5,000 new homes, Jericho incomes and home prices are higher, and the P C and the Affordable Housing Committee believe that we should set targets. That's what the whereas statements are. And then, the framework explains, these are target rates of construction. And I think most of them are expressed in terms of an average. So we expect a lower number at the first few years, and maybe higher numbers in the second two years. And then the different, different types of housing that would be included. Next slide. And then, these are the action steps. Was to complete the wastewater study and decide. It doesn't say, and we talked about this, it used to say, or it had said, or maybe there was discussion about whether or not it should say, needs to be done by this date, we're gonna build it, it's gonna happen. And I think it's premature to mandate that. And I think they won't be ready to commit to that. So what it currently says, what the resolution says, is that we'll complete the study and have a public process to decide. So it is forcing accountability in a way, because we want to make sure that there's an actual decision, that the plan doesn't just get put on a shelf, but we're not dictating what that decision needs to be. I think the wording is something like that, timely, you know, so it's not gonna take forever. Then it also says, we, planning commission, the select board is directing us to update the town plan and zoning to reduce obstacles, that the Affordable Housing Committee and the Community Development Corp will partner with developers and residents to figure out how to get more supply. And we added that there would be an annual review of our progress, that we can adjust as needed. So, the next steps are, we can discuss the text and the draft this evening. Hopefully, we could move to a vote to approve it as a recommendation at our next meeting. And then it would go to the select board, and we would work with them and encourage them to adopt it, and work with them if there had changes that needed to be made. Regardless of what happens, I think we all think that this content could be, could be and should be incorporated into the town plan. So I would like to now open up to discussion. So the draft was sent around. I really do want to thank S J for marshaling so much time and effort with the Affordable Housing Committee over several meetings, and some arm wrestling, and lots of research, and lots of soul searching, and lots of evidence to determine what the numbers should be. But basically, bring it to this group to see how can we be comfortable to voting to approve a recommendation to the select board? What do people feel needs to happen to be able to have that vote next meeting? And hopefully have that be an affirmative vote. So I'll stop there.
So I read what was sent to us as homework. I didn't have any changes. I thought it looked great. So that's my feeling on that. I am ready to move it forward. I don't need to review it again, but.
Well, I'll jump in then, because that's my role. I read through it as well. I agree with 99.9% of it. I believe we should put a date for the select board to take action, to say yes or no to wastewater treatment plan. The study's gonna be done, it's gonna be delivered. It shouldn't take them more than two or three weeks to say, yes, we want this, or no, we don't. And we should mandate that as part of our resolution. Either speak or get off the podium. And let's give them a date to do that.
That's compelling. I agree.
Thank you, sir.
Well, and my, my comment, sort of adjacent to that, is even if they agree to move forward with the wastewater, I'm still gonna put a plug in, the town needs more governmental capacity to make that happen anytime soon. And I think it really needs a town manager. And, so I just don't know if we want to include any, any language like that in this or not.
Well, I support that. I think it's overloading the wagon. And, but we should, we should push that into something else, because we do need that full time. We've gotten big enough as a town.
Eric, can I ask you a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
So when you say to include in the resolution that the select board should take, I think you said something like, take action, I'm paraphrasing. Do you want to include specifically what is meant by taking action?
Yes. And that would be to approve or abandon a plan to get wastewater treatment in the town of Jericho.
Would that be like, something like seeking, like, starting to take the necessary steps to have a bond, or, like, do we want to be, how specific are you envisioning defining what action is?
I might have to defer to Linda on, once we have the wastewater treatment, wastewater survey done, what is the next step towards getting wastewater here?
My understanding would be that the select board would decide to advance one of the alternatives to engineering, to be engineered. That would be the next step. One or more of the options that are presented.
So that would be, to your question, Wendy, that would be the, the recommendation, that the select board vote to advance this within X number of days, because we wanted to move forward.
We don't know what this, we don't know what this study is gonna say. I mean, the study might say, I'm just playing devil's advocate, you know, it might say $750 million to support five families in one institution, like, so.
I, Susan, I totally-
We could say decide, but I don't think we could say decide to advance.
Right. No, that's what Eric said. He said, make a decision. And maybe the decision is, no, none of these options are viable, because they're all $100 million.
Well, i- if the town doesn't do something for infrastructure, there's really not any point in doing this new town plan as we're writing it right now, because none of it's gonna happen. So I don't see how the infrastructure is optional in light of the town plan that we're currently writing. It's required. So I don't think it's a question of, are you gonna move forward with it or not? But it's a question of, how are you gonna move forward with it? Otherwise, we should be changing the town plan to say, preserve Jericho as it is.
But to that, to that point, they're going to get, the select board will get a survey, a study on wastewater. The study, I presume, will have, here are your three options of how to get wastewater here. The select boards should say, pick one, or pick none, but do something with it. Don't just throw it up on a shelf and say, we'll deal with this sometime when the moon turns blue three times in a week.
So can I make this concrete, just bring it back to the resolution? Because I'm, I'm not disagreeing with anything, I'm just trying to figure out where and how it fits within this particular resolution, so.
Would you like to?
Oh, that is so much easier. Thank you.
I think I-
Yeah, so if I look at the whereas and the therefore's.
The first one, lead to robust public process to review the village wastewater feasibility study, to inform decision-making and establish well-defined next steps regarding municipal wastewater treatment from the village centers and commercial district within three weeks of having received the document.
So the recommendation is, is to lead, right now, the way it's framed, is to lead a robust process to review it, not to make a decision.
I think it needs to stay like-
So, I'm just asking, right?
Decide whether or not to begin a robust process, because they have to decide to either begin, or to say, it's not possible.
All right, got it, I see what you're talking about.
And the be a further resolve, the first one.
Officially, something. Officially go on the record as for or against. And if yes, then need a robust public process started immediately.
So, but I, but I think what this is saying is, just to be clear, I'm not arguing against it, that there's, the way this is written now, is the robust public process would inform the yes or no. But we-
I think we just completed the study, which informs the yes or no. After that, it's the how.
So can, who, I, if I could ask, I don't know, but Susan or S J, if you could just weigh in on what your thought was about this be a further resolve, that it'd be leading a public process to review the wastewater feasibility study?
My kind of impression of how the select board will, does business is that over the course of a few public meetings, their regular select board meetings, or they might decide to have a special meeting, they will receive the report. So then the report becomes part of public record. And anybody can look at it, anybody can read it, anybody can send comments about it to the select board. And then, at the next meeting, they would discuss the report, and they might want more information from the engineers, they might want clarification, they might decide they need more public input. Or it might be really clear to them what they want to do next. So it would be over the course of anywhere from two to several public select board meetings. So it has to be on the record, because they have to review the report and discuss their, what they feel the pros and cons are. And then, at some point, they would do nothing, or they would decide to do something. So what this is saying is, do that, and, but establish what, do that with robust public process, meaning, don't just, you know, have it on your agenda and don't tell anybody about it. You have to really step it up and let people know that this report has been received, and this is the content of the report. And you have to decide what you're gonna do next. It might be something, and it might be nothing. I think what the biggest change would be to add in some kind of timeframe at the very end of that first bullet point. We could potentially make it a little tighter, too. So instead of informing decision-making, you could just forget that part, and just say, establish well-defined, or, you know, decide well-defined next steps regarding municipal wastewater. I think if we, if we say, you have to do wastewater, they'll say, they won't sign this resolution. They'll be like, well, we haven't gotten the study yet, it's premature. Trying to give them like, a little bit of recognizing the reality of the situation. So it could say, lead a robust public process to review the feasibility study and decide well-defined next steps regarding municipal wastewater for the village center and the commercial districts, but I don't think it would be three weeks. I think it could potentially be three months, two months, something like that. Probably at least three select board meetings, which would be at least like six weeks.
Three months would be fine. That's long enough for them to dilly-dally, but still, it's certain when something should be done.
Right. So if it were that, if we could just tie it in, so presumably, if we agree with this, as the planning commission, either tonight or at our next meeting, it gets submitted to the select board. Do we want to tie the feedback, again, because what we're saying is, we'd really love to have this done in advance of our getting the town plan done. Right? And so if we-
The sooner we-
Right? So is there a timeframe in which we could also say, so rather than just three weeks, three week order, you know, like to tie it to, like, we need it in three weeks, so that information becomes part of something.
I love that point. And, that, I hate to say, that almost begs that we add an extra line there, which is, the Town Planning Commission- the town planning commission, in order to complete the town plan, needs this done by these dates.
Well, that's something like, you know, so that it says, yeah, something like that.
Because as Chris is saying, we don't have wastewater.
Right.
Our town plan is very different than what we've been trying to envision.
So friendly amendment words for you all to figure out if that makes sense, S J and Susan, but somehow connecting the, the interconnection would be clear and the timeframe then would be clear. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I don't know if it's.
I just don't know if the timelines are.
If it matter, if it makes sense.
Coincide, because the town plan's going to need to be in a pretty final version by late summer. And then, well, they might lie, I don't, I don't know. Like I have to look at my dates.
But in some ways, you kind of want it in the opposite direction, because if you think about it, like if we could have this resolution signed, then the town plan, as Chris just pointed out, like, look, this whole town plan doesn't work without wastewater. Then the select board has that much more ammunition, motivation, justification, strategy that helps them make a decision in favor of wastewater investment. It's not necessarily, the, the town plan in a way will help them in favor rather than this helping being, you know, them deciding and then going into the town plan.
It's a chicken and egg kind of thing.
Yeah. I actually, if, if we did that, Susan, I like where you're going. And so maybe what we do is we lead with, so just reverse the bullets. So direct the planning commission to identify the town plan updates. And then the select board will commit to, whether it's leading a robust process, you know, commit to a public review of the wastewater feasibility study to and to define next steps.
Yeah, I just don't want them to wait until they have our town plan to start, because then it's gonna be February. So that's my comment about that. Okay. I feel like Jim has been patiently waiting. Is it okay if we take public comments on this topic now? Or do we have more to say as a group before we allow public comment?
Well, so did anybody have any other comments on any other parts of the draft? Is that kind of the primary?
I think it's, I really like.
That needed work.
I like it, and I especially like that it doesn't use any language around affordable housing other than the Jericho Planning Commission and Affordable Housing Committee. And I had a little sidebar, S J, as you know. The, I, to the extent to which we can move away from using the language of affordable housing without contextualizing it as one, as, as a the only type of housing we're looking for, because it narrows people's thinking about what we're actually talking about.
We, we do have that in the now be a resolve.
Right.
As a target weighted rate of new dwellings, averaging thirty per year resulting, and of at least thirty of them as missing middle and twenty as affordable to individuals at this price. So it is in there without being as explicit as this is all about affordable housing. It's about, we need more housing.
Yeah.
And here's how we'd like to see it divided up.
So I just, I really, I, I want to applaud you for making it that way.
Yes. Okay.
Give you a word.
Can you move me, you step up to the microphone? Yeah, sorry, Jim. We want everyone to hear what you have to say.
A, a word that I think you might be looking for is diversified housing. Essentially says affordable, subsidized workforce, middle, top, whatever. We don't have a diversified pool being created. We have a diversified pool in existence. And the history of Jericho included diversified housing construction. Listening to you, I, I, I think you can put some energy and some meat behind the infrastructure. Because when Seth Jensen was the planner in Jericho, the Jericho Center waters, water wells were identified as not meeting any of the state's standards for isolation, separation and water quality. And essentially, everybody's afraid to test the water and everybody's afraid to say anything about it in a public way. Doing wastewater is a public health necessity for the existing housing. It is not an optional alternative to how you can shape the future development. There's an inherent responsibility to everybody that's already here to clean up their water. And you have two choices. You either fix the sewer or you bring clean municipal water. And always remember, municipal water is the source, is the end product of all of the existing municipal wastewater systems are deposited into Lake Champlain. So when you think about clean water, land-based, well-designed, smaller systems are much better for water quality and for health than reliance solely on a single water source, which is what the municipal systems have. So I think the first recommendation essentially needs is structure. Who is going to carry this ball forward? You talked about a town manager. You have an authorization to have five select board members. And none of the existing select board members have any background in capital funding or development of infrastructure or leading those types of structures. So as a citizen, I don't know why we're running on 60% energy when we could be running on 100% energy. And there's major savings if you do this work on a coordinated basis. But the reason that you need structure, or all of these studies are worthless, without structure, you cannot exercise eminent domain. Without eminent domain, you cannot solve the problem of, there's a really good resource over here for septic. And there's a really good place over here for development. The private developer tries to acquire those to become vertically integrated. And if the community wants to actually accomplish something, it has a power that no developer has. The developer has a checkbook and efforts like that. The community, municipality has eminent domain. They can, and as I've tried to explain to several people, the town has now become a developer of railroad circle. What I know about land, and I only have 63 years driving a shovel, I think that's gonna be very difficult to develop that land well. And I heard Sarah talking about the challenge in that area of septic. And it's one thing to do best fix, to save an existing house in the post Bianchi method. You can't use that method to develop new housing. So the house that's there, and I think it's, they bought McMillan, but I'm trying to think what the other one is. That's a best fix system on the house that was torn down. So on the other hand, the town owns Lee River Road. And as you go down Lee River Road towards Mount Mansfield, there are areas where you could have wastewater treatment. And so you combine private entrepreneurship, private skills. And, but you need a czar. You need somebody just like the guy from St. Albans, the town manager, that came in and said, we want to fix bikes. We want to repair bikes. So we're gonna make a deal with a bike guy. We're gonna loan him money, and if he really performs well, maybe he doesn't have to pay the $70,000 back. We have a potential health problem that could diminish the, the wealth of the town, the grand list. If people find that their wells are polluted now. Isn't that scary? And we've also got wells going dry. And there's all types of opportunity. Strategic infrastructure plan, where we would have brought water to save Jericho Center in the event of a fire from the high school. Those of us who do strategic planning would have put conduits in for water and for pressured sewer to take the sewer, septic away from the community.
So Jim, can you, can you bring this back to the?
Sure.
Yeah, back to our resolution. What is not in the resolution that needs to be included?
You don't have leadership and structure and capital funding.
What Chris said that we need that other body. Is that your recommendation?
I think we need it just to maintain health and life quality for the people that are already here.
It means of like, what do you want the resolution to say? So should it say, we need to staff this position? And we need five select board members? Is that your recommendation?
You need, you need a strike force, yes. Yes. You, you, you need a czar, a person.
We might say is under the part of resolution, be it further resolved that to achieve these housing goals, the select board will, blah, 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 including add additional members to the select board and appoint a town manager to oversee this process.
It, it, it doesn't necessarily.
Would that meet your, your, your objections?
Town manager requires 18 months, has to go through the legislature. You can modify a job description and you can create that authority under the existing structure without getting to the town manager.
Town infrastructure employee, town wastewater management employee, someone who is in the employ of town whose job is to do that.
Yeah, and you can subcontract that. You could hire two-thirds of a P E, for example, but you give them the authority.
So would it make sense, Susan, for us to put into the resolution that if the select board approves this, so that's going into that first bit there that we recommend you do these things within date certain, that once that decision is made, an individual be identified to act as the town's representative to carry out this wastewater treatment, wastewater's treatment and installation program, if it's feasible. Can we add something like that into the, the document?
Yeah, I think we've heard where we're saying we establish well-defined next steps. We could clarify that. Yeah, well, I don't know about that, but more like, you know, establish, well-defined next steps and requisite, I think is the right word, requisite resources to execute said next steps, or I don't like the language, but something like that. So that it's more, it's more than just a plan, but it's a plan. And I think that a lot of what Jim just offered is, would be really great to make sure that David hears in advance of the next work session or whichever the next one, whenever, it's either on June 6th or June 20th, which is specifically around infrastructure. So I would make sure that he sees the minutes from this discussion. And then Jim, I would encourage you to participate with us in that meeting when we'll talk a lot more about like the specifics of the infrastructure needs that we have. And then in terms of like town manager and five select board members, Linda and I did talk to David about addressing that as part of the plan in the town plan. So I think that I agreed with Eric earlier when he was like, well, we don't want to fill the wagon. We really want to be focused. This is about increasing the housing supply. Yes, we need all these other things to make it happen. But what we're really trying to do is get everybody to agree that at least these are the goals. Then we can argue about how to make it happen. But I do, I think it's a good idea. We can definitely, we'll add in something about like specific resourcing around next steps.
Now, wasn't that part of our ARPA recommendation though, is to have?
Yes.
And so I actually don't feel like we're adding anything and we're repeating something.
Yeah, and then adding about the, about the governance kind of stuff, the town manager stuff. I think the difference is that in the ARPA recommendation, we recommended that the town add a Dominic St. Cloud, a development expert, a development resource, either as an employee or as a consultant. And I thought what I just heard that I was responding to here was more around resources specifically around wastewater implementation.
Yeah, if I could ask, so Susan, I, I, I agree. I actually, I again, if this is a resolution about housing and the intention is to set an intention for where we need to go, I am of the don't dilute with something that could be picked off and cause so much controversy, they don't get to the primary thing. And the primary thing here is housing and making sure that we have the infrastructure needed for housing. So I'm gonna say, I, I hear you and I hear Chris, I just don't think this is the right strategic vehicle. And I think we have a responsibility to be strategic if we want to get anything on housing passed. So I have a suggested rewrite for that first whereas, or the first, be it further resolved. The first bullet say, commit to, so the select board is going to commit to public review of the wastewater, the village wastewater feasibility study within three weeks to inform well-defined next steps regarding municipal wastewater for the commercial, for the village center and commercial district to support town housing goals, because that was missing, to support town housing goals and ensure the town has the capacity slash expertise to implement. So something like that. So we're connecting it back to the housing goals. And we're also flagging that the town needs to commit, the select board needs to commit to having the capacity and expertise to implement the actions.
Yeah, I, I agree with everything. Other than that, it already says to achieve these housing goals, the select board will. That's the preamble to those bullets, so we don't need to repeat that again. I think it's, yeah. But other than that, yeah, okay. So we'll work with that.
So I think we should probably move on just for timing, but I'm sorry, Jim.
Heidi, public health trumps all the stuff. This is something that needs to be done. And I, I just suggest that you look at it as a strategic infrastructure thrust.
Without a doubt, Jim. And actually, as we, I am 100% on board with you. And but what I'm thinking is, next meetings, we're talking about infrastructure in particular. And that's where we make sure when we're talking about infrastructure, we weave in the, the critical public health crisis that we're going to be in if we do not invest in this. It's just, I'm trying to think of what are the strategic vehicles for the message? And the carrots and sticks and the claw. I'm not sure this is the one. But I, but I agree with, it's the message and we need to make sure.
Key, also the thing is, I, I've been banging on the drum about the $22 million for stormwater. All of these things dovetail right together. That, that fiber optics, global warming, stormwater, fire protection, emergency access, septic, all of these things combined with an intention to form public-private partnerships to accomplish this in the absence of onerous legal process.
So that, that's the strategy. The tactics we're employing right now are start with affordable housing where we have a clear defined lever. We need wastewater, we need water treatment. Push in that direction. We can't get it in town wide at once. That's, that's not gonna, that's not realistic. But if we can start here, we've got that first little wedge into the door, we can get the rest of it over.
And I, I think.
Is right, the tactics are also appropriate.
I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest the tactics. All I, all I can say to you is that it would be easier for me to go build this than to try to get what you're trying to do done, you know?
Oh, agreed.
That.
That's, that's the taxpayer dollars. We have a responsibility to use them wisely.
Well, some of us would just do it. But, but one point for all of you is that, that if we want to minimize cost, I bet you, if I was building a community land-based septic system, it would cost about 50% of the development of single individual septic systems, house by house. And the, the development. And the, the development that's off Morgan Road right now, I believe from the, this is all anecdotal, they're taking all nine houses and putting it into a single community system. And there's major advantages to this. You can do sampling. You can do studies because you've got them all in one place.
I'm going to stop you right there because we're not, we can't go into that detail, but Dave Ganter had also had a comment and I just want to get it recorded since it's in the chat. So Dave, if you, I can, you could ask or I could read what you wrote. He was asking could the CDC manage infrastructure development? And that is one possibility. When we worked on ARPA, we suggested that the resources around development could potentially work, be hired by and supervised by the Community Development Corp. And you're right, that is a good, that is a good place for this effort to potentially sit, especially as a consultant. And then it looks like SJ has her.
Yeah, I, I was just thinking that could be in place of expanding the select board or something.
Linda and Sarah, how are you on time?
We're, we're, we go for it.
Okay.
Yes.
You're okay?
Yep.
Um, okay. So I just wanted to say just a couple of things. One, thank you all so much for the, the thought and, and time that you're putting into this. This is something that we've been working on for a really long time and it's exciting to see it. That you get a chance to see it now and that you're responding the way that you are to it. I think Eric did a really great job of kind of representing the feeling that the Affordable Housing Committee has around the wastewater feasibility study and infrastructure piece of this resolution, which really is that there needs to be, there needs to be some urgency and accountability around that. I think I'm not going to beat that any further. Eric did a great job. And the one thing that I, that I want to add that's new is just that the intention, when we present this to the select board, the last time Susan and I went in front of the select board, we said, there's a problem, like believe us, there's a problem and we need to do something about it. And it was, it wasn't necessarily a gloom and doom presentation, but it was a real, you know, this, this is what we're facing. And we gave them a kind of huge, broad spectrum of possible ways that they could address the issue. And so this will be the next time that they see us, uh, when we go in front of them and offer them this resolution as a real kind of yardstick measuring tool, goal-setting device to give us something that we're working towards that's real, that we can wrap our arms around, that isn't this abstract kind of amorphous, we need more housing, we need affordable housing, blah, blah, blah. But something really concrete that we can plan towards and work towards and then measure our success against and adjust as necessary. And, you know, try to strategize around. But also when we give them this kind of target resolution of, okay, here's a way that, here's a framework that we can, we can understand how we approach the, the solution to this problem or how we start to address this problem. Hand in hand with that, we will also present that huge list of possible things that the select board can do. The housing committee spent a lot of time really digging into that list and prioritizing that list so that not only are we saying, here's what we think you need to do. This is the scope of the response that we expect and that we need from you. But here's how we think you can do it so that it's not just a, oh, here's a problem and it's too big for me to fix. Here are some, here are some ways that we can do it. And so while the target resolution gives us benchmarks and gives us real measurable things and things that we can work towards in terms of, you know, having a yearly report that assesses where we're at and yada, yada. Partnering that with a list of, of prioritized approaches that we really think that they should consider because we've put a lot of effort into what would make sense for, sense for Jericho. I think will help hopefully make the problem seem more addressable. I don't know if that's a word. And that is an opportunity and a forum where putting in some of these kinds of ideas may make sense and fleshing out some of the, you know, having a, maybe not czar, but you know, identifying a, a specific point person that can manage the program or identifying X, Y, and Z, all of the ideas that you've mentioned. And a lot of the ones that we've been talking about for the last year or two. And so I think that will be a part of the presentation, an important part of the presentation and perhaps one that I, an affordable housing committee can come to you guys with and help us. You can give us some input on that piece of the message when we deliver it as well, because we want to give them this tool and this goal. And then hand in hand with that, we want to give them some real executable ways of achieving some of these goals. And some of that will also be in the town plan and in a lot of the work that you're doing as well.
Awesome. Okay. I think that that takes us through topic six and topic seven, unless there's any more public comment related to affordable housing resolution. Jim?
One comment, um, the, the.
Step up to the microphone, friends. Everybody wants to hear your comment.
You know, since I was a little kid, people didn't want me to use my voice. I'm working on several projects, but one of them is geothermal. And it is an infrastructure tool. It appears as though Vermont Gas is going to do a beta project as their long-term strategic thing to replace their carbon with geothermal as a commodity. Uh, they can invest the capital to do the geothermal upfront investment and then in effect sell the fifty-five degree water to the users. And I've been trying to get them to do it on a large building that I manage. And it appears as though they're now more likely to look at smaller projects. But if we're not planning for geothermal, then we're missing the boat, particularly when you talk about infrastructure. Because if you don't put the conduits in, you don't identify the areas that you can do it in. I think it would be a mistake. So, and the other thing is while you treat septage, septage is warm and it can also warm geothermal lines. So when we create energy to create warm water, we have water above fifty-five degrees and you use geothermal. That's why I have somebody that has the matrix in their minds of understanding how all this stuff all fits together. And I, so I would add geothermal to your agenda.
I'll stay in compliance.
Well, if you store water, you also build wetlands.
Yeah. Interesting. Okay. Okay. So we are going to close topic seven and move to topic eight, the planner's report.
I have a question.
So I already gave.
Oh, sorry, Dave. Go ahead.
This should be short. I just want to know if anybody knows who is responsible for managing the ongoing maintenance in the existing house at Two Railroad Circle. At the public forum, a couple of weeks ago, I asked two of the select board members. Wayne Howes said it was not him. Eric Johnson's answer was, well, he was mostly responsible for the initial acquisition. So I took that as a non-answer to if he was watching the ongoing current maintenance. So this is the, this is supposedly the affordable housing site we're working on. And there's a house there. I know it has a leak in there. There's water damage in one part. So so it, it doesn't, I meant not asking for some long discussion, does, does anybody know who's doing the current maintenance?
I don't know the name of the person, but John Abbott told me that the, I believe the intention was to hire a property management company who would be responsible at all hours and do regular checks and have the knowledge and ability to work through problems.
Being directed by our town manager, saying a property manager is responsible? I mean, that would work. It's okay.
That's my understanding, but I don't know the name of the property manager, but I think John is the person who can answer that question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. I already talked about most of the things I had for the planner's report, but there is one thing that I haven't mentioned that I want to update you all on, which is that the meeting we had planned for Thursday with Stan Tech, who's doing the scoping study for the Jericho Corners to Riverside Path had to be postponed. So it is not happening on Thursday, May eighteenth. There was just some lingering questions that needed to be answered before we were comfortable presenting the alternatives to the select board. So we're working on getting all that information collected. And I would anticipate that meeting to be rescheduled in June, but I will let you know when I have a new date for that.
Okay.
That's all that I had.
That's all you have? Okay. Closing on topic eight, moving to topic nine, um, report for events. Does anyone have any liaison updates? I have one update, which is that Susan and I are switching, which we talked about before. Susan is going to work on trails and I'm going to work on DRB. Anyone else?
Just to point a clarification, is there any conflict of interest with you being on DRB and being with military?
I'm not on the DRB.
Okay.
I'm just the liaison.
Just like any, any member of the public?
Just like, yes, there to ask questions and sort of funnel back to you what their decisions are or anything else that we can use as feedback from them to update them.
Great.
That's my intention. That's a good question. Okay. Any takeaways from recent events that people have attended or seminars?
I went to this really great event like two weeks ago at the, at the school.
SJ has her hand up. SJ, yes, please.
Um, I just wanted to let you know that uh, Michael Omen and Bill Butler from Wisdom House gave a presentation, the Affordable Housing Committee that was recorded. And so if you have been interested in that project and want to uh, see the presentation that's on the MMCTV website. And then I posted their slides and the notes for each of the slides on the Affordable Housing Committee website. So that resource exists. Um, and the J C D C meeting last month, Habitat for Humanity came and spoke. And so if that's an area that you're interested in, it was a, it was a good presentation. And they really do provide a lot of different, they're just a great resource and provide a lot of different connections and services for communities beyond just the build. So it was, it was neat to hear from them about, about their projects and how they work. And they shared some images of some of the different kinds of buildings that they do. They're, all of them are different. It's not just one type of structure that they repeat, but just some example images too. I know that some folks in the community were interested in the, what those houses could look like. And, and part of what they will do with the community is do some community outreach. If they're working on a project to gather input from neighbors and, you know, the kinds of things that, that are important to the community to take into consideration as they're doing their build. And then of course, making sure that the families that are moving into those homes are meeting the community and kind of getting along. But anyway, so that was, uh, last month's J C D C meeting, if anyone's interested.
Good update. Any upcoming events that anyone is planning on going to, that they're excited about? Okay. All right. I think that closes out topic nine, topic ten, other business. Anyone? Susan, anything? No.
No, I think our, our plate's like pretty full. We kind of know have our marching orders for ourselves for the next six weeks. I guess we didn't determine if we should have an additional meeting in July.
If we're going to send, are we going to see the revision for the, um, resolution to the select board before that goes out?
Yeah, it'll go back to you guys before our next meeting and then we'll actually vote on it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So we don't, we have a meeting on Ju, on.
So the next topic is wrap up and planning for the next meetings. So we have.
June sixth is David, uh, infrastructure, community facilities. Approving the housing resolution or considering approving the housing resolution. June twentieth, we have David work session on the local economy.
Did you just say June twentieth?
June twentieth.
I'm sorry, I jumped to July by mistake. I'm trying to make sure I have it in my calendar. Okay.
Okay. So those are the next two.
Added to either the June sixth or June twentieth, um, an update from David on his outline. You know, like his table of contents, his organizing. Yeah.
And do you think we can get from him beforehand? The, the value, the list of values so that we could make that our question of the month for June?
Yeah, we already, uh, yeah, we already have that.
Okay, okay. We need to get it. Perfect.
But you're right, Sarah. We, we want to determine the question of the month.
Which I think.
Around values.
Yeah, it could be really simple. Here are the, here are the top twenty, whatever the number is, views that we've heard repeated in our survey. What are your top five ranked one through five? Doesn't mean you don't like the other ones, just means what are your top ones? And, and make it a super simple question. Because some of the questions we've asked so far are pretty complex. So that sounds exciting. Okay. And then that takes us into July. So if we only have one meeting in July, is that enough? Or do we need to add another meeting since we can't have one on the fourth?
So Susan, I don't know if you recall, but there was an email that you were talking about doing a joint meeting with the select board and the Affordable Housing Committee. Do you remember?
Yeah, so July eleventh. So, um, there has been one joint meeting so far. I think it was PC Affordable Housing and Community Development Corp., not the select board. Do I have that right? I wasn't there. SJ, you were there.
That's what it was.
Yeah. So it was time to reconvene that group. So I was look circling around July eleventh because we didn't have another meeting. So if we could pull that off, whether it's a joint meeting or just a planning commission meeting, would you guys be willing and available to meet on the eleven?
That those conflict with the Affordable Housing Committee meetings?
Yeah, that's their regular.
That's their regular.
Yes. And SJ did mention that that was definitely like inconvenient for them. So I pick, but she was willing to work around it. We could also, I guess, go further, try to go further out. And I didn't get like a response back to that.
Would, would that be an opportunity to talk about expanding the town governance?
That would be a perfect opportunity. Yes.
Because I really think we need to push that.
Yeah, that would be a good, that would be the right forum to vet that. Yeah.
I would be willing to give my July eleventh meeting to that topic.
Or we could look at, we could look at a different, we could look at July, what's the next Tuesday? Is July eighteenth is our meeting. So then it could be July twenty-fifth. The good thing about potentially July twenty-fifth is we could also get, use that meeting to get some feedback from the slightly broader group and discussion about the draft of the town plan. You know, that's kind of like an informed, engaged. So would people have preferences or conflicts? I guess maybe I, we'd have to figure out how many of the other people could attend also.
Let's propose both and see which one we can get the most people to.
Okay. All right. I'll do that. Okay, all right, I'll do that. And if nobody will come, then we'll still work it out based on how many people from the planning commission could come. It sounds like there's interest in having a second meeting. Okay.
Yeah, we could figure that out at the next meeting. If you have time.
Okay.
Yep.
Progress. Okay, anything else for planning? We, for now? No, okay, uh, do we need to have an executive session? No. And then the last topic, topic thirteen, adjourn. Can I get a motion?
Will you adjourn?
I will second.
Okay. Um, and.
Ten minutes ahead next time.
Not yet. And a vote, all those in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, we're in the meeting adjourned.